But that could go up to thirty months after the year. So that's.
Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, almost January. February twenty-seventh. We're not going back in time. It's a little after seven-thirty. We just came from executive session where we discussed construction litigation. The first resolution on the agenda tonight is resolution number one, considering approving the use of Village Streets for the Porchester Teachers Association rally.
Whereas in an email dated February sixteenth, the Porchester Teachers Association requested to use, to hold a rally raising awareness over teacher and school employee retention issues on March sixth, two thousand twenty-four, from three fifteen to five thirty P, five thirty P M., starting and ending at the Porchester Middle School. And whereas the Porchester Teachers Association rally requires the Village Board of Trustees to provide approval of the streets, now therefore be resolved that subject to the final approval of the Police Department, the Porchester Teachers Association is authorized to use the Rybrook Streets for the rally, raising awareness over teacher and school employee retention issues on March sixth, two thousand twenty-four, from three fifteen to five thirty P M., starting and ending at the Porchester Middle School. And be it further resolved that the Village Streets shall be used in compliance with the terms and conditions established by the Police Department.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
I believe we have a representative from the school. Do you want to say anything? If you could please just introduce yourself and.
My name is Chris Kazem, Porchester Teachers Association President and a public employee at Porchester School District for seventeen years. I know I sent a statement to you guys and I appreciate everyone's support for this because this is an important issue that is statewide. It's not a Porchester Rybrook issue. It's something that I've found that is a long-term issue that impacts not only teachers and school districts, but police and all public service.
Talk into the mic a little louder.
Oh, I'm sorry. This impacts police departments, it impacts fire, village workers, anyone who's in the tiered pension system and public service throughout New York State. I've gained support from Rybrook, from Porchester Village Board I will be speaking with next week, the state level from NICEIT. I've asked local legislators from both the state and county to participate and join us. We have a shortage of teachers in New York State currently, and that's going to potentially get worse in the future. So I have, I worry the future of education in our districts and statewide, that a teacher shortage and disparities within the tiered system and pension system that could impact retention and lead to more attrition down the road.
All right, thank you.
Just to be clear, so the route that they're looking for is to start at the middle school. We'll go up Ridge Street, we'll go up and around the high school, and then back again to the, towards the Porchester Middle School along the same route?
So we're, we're looking to start at the middle school, and I know weather could be a potential issue. I was discussing with Chief Austin before, depending on whether the route actually might be shortened. But we're looking to go from the middle school up Bowman to about where it meets Wash, uh, Westchester Avenue.
Okay. Route one, that's route one, right, on the map?
Yeah.
Okay.
Route two would possibly be, just be Bowman up to Ridge and back down Westchester.
Okay.
So this is on the sidewalks or this is on the street?
Sidewalks.
Are any of the other organizations that should be concerned about the same issues joining you?
Tomorrow I'm meeting with the Executive Board of Blimebrook Teachers Association. So I'll be meeting with their exec board, looking for support. We do have support from local teachers associations in White Plains. The goal was to have pop-up rallies in every district statewide simultaneously to really shed light on how important fixing Tier Six is. It is a priority of NICEIT, New York State Teachers Association, State Union, and this is one of their things that they're working with, with state legislators. It will be discussed at the Committee of a Hundred next week, and I'm hoping we've invited NICEIT's president to attend as well, as local legislators.
And the timing is, I'm sorry?
Time.
Three fifteen to five, to five thirty.
So the opening would include a couple speeches from myself, Mayor Porchester, Superintendent Schools, Board of Ed members, maybe another president, a Tier Six teacher that this does impact down the road. If Melinda Person's president of NICEIT attends as well, asking her to speak, or some NICEIT representative from the Tarrytown Regional Office.
Well, my big question was, was answered about the sidewalks. I'm assuming Greg, you're aware of this and. Oh, okay.
Because I think you're talking about, it could be upwards of four hundred people, right?
Yeah, that's what they're.
Yeah.
So would you stop traffic?
We would stop traffic.
Just for them to cross, or is it continuous walk? How would you do it?
We would stop traffic.
Here, yeah, why don't you come up, Chief?
And I think the estimating, so it could be upwards of four hundred people is what they're asking.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, because you know when, even, even the school children, the, the lights go through their change and they stop traffic and then the cars are backed up on Ridge Street for, you know.
After night.
Forever, and this is a long time. So tell us how you would implement this.
We would, we would stop traffic as they're, as, as they're going across Ridge Street from Bowman.
Right.
So, and then once the group is on Ridge Street, then we would open up Bowman for cars to either make a right onto Ridge Street going south or up Bowman Avenue, but we wouldn't let cars go north on Ridge Street until they got to Westchester Avenue. And then once they're going down Westchester Avenue, then we would open up Ridge Streets.
If it's going that way.
So that's blocking for about ten minutes is what I'm.
Yeah, I would, I would think so.
I don't think that's a good idea.
And I, and I gave Chris Rybrook's contact information so he can let them know because that's going to.
Okay.
Because that's going to impact them. You know, I, 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 I don't see this having a, a major impact any different than the kids walking home.
Well, the kids, they stop the traffic and they let them cross and then they hold them up until the next light. Here you're going to hold everybody up until they're finished, which could be hundreds of people.
Well, well, they're, but the, the kids don't work, don't walk on the sidewalks. The adults are not walking the sidewalks. So I think that will be, you know, I think we'll be dealing with more.
Responsible people.
Create an easier group to herd.
Yes. More responsible pedestrians. So we will be stopping traffic. I'm sure that it's not going to be, there will be people who are not going to be happy about it, but we're going to do our best to minimize it and, and, and get the, and get them across and keep the traffic flowing as best we can.
Why can't you follow the light pattern, let people go into the way their crossing guards do?
We could do that too.
It would, but then you have the group.
Just make it longer.
Broken up.
But that's, but then you're keeping the flow going, which I see.
To me, that becomes a longer.
Have you ever been on Ridge Street waiting for that? It's a horror.
It's not that horrible.
You know what, you're there for like ten minutes, I feel like, and then it kind of moves.
Yeah, that's, right.
I, I.
Kids are like herding cats.
Yeah.
Yeah. You go use your judgment. Obviously, if you got to stop, if it's getting great, there's too much traffic, you stop half the group. Traffic going, right?
I'm all for, I understand it completely, but I have been stuck on, all the way back on Ridge Street, waiting for that crossing guard to let, to move the kids forward, and it is very frustrating.
Right, I agree. It is, it is frustrating, but it's.
And unnecessary.
I also feel like, you know, I put a lot of faith in Chief Austin and his ability to.
I think keeping it flowing, because if you're backing up all the way, I don't think that that's helpful either.
No, and we'll, and we'll instruct the officers that if we see the traffic's getting backed up too much and there's a lot of people coming, that we would just stop the people.
Right, it's only for two minutes and then they can catch up. They're resolved, they can walk a little faster.
Yeah, but you know, as long as they're on the sidewalks, I think that will, it'll be easier to.
If you don't mind, just, thank you.
I'm sending a letter to the editor of Westmore News tomorrow so that the community is aware this weekend when it goes to print that this event is happening.
Okay.
And just full transparency. Every time I've talked about this event, I want nothing negative. I don't want to impact people. This is supposed to be something, bringing the community together, not aggravating anyone. So I'm, I don't want to do anything that does lead to any.
Right.
So I wish.
Personally, I tend to avoid the area around three o'clock anyway.
But I'm sure the police will use their judgment. They've been used to this.
Yeah, it's nothing. And it's four police officers, so it's not like they're going to.
Right, right. It's not like they're going to be starting fights.
Right. No, 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 I'm not trying to stop it and I'm all for it. I just, the flow of traffic.
Ry Ridge is, yes, at three o'clock, even coming from the high school to the middle school sometimes.
Exactly, so.
Yep.
And when people can't get their kids to their after-school activities, it is a, a seeping sense of frustration. That's all I'm saying.
And I worry about the weather because that can.
Oh, yeah. Change a lot. I know, you can't go anywhere. I know, I know.
Good luck.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Concerns?
I'm dead out.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes, Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Good luck with that. And Chief, I know you'll work well with them. Thank you, we appreciate it. Resolution number two, considering an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and U Audit Associates for utility audit services.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook Treasurer wishes to, for the village to have an audit conducted of the village's utility expenses, and whereas U Audit conducts standard audits for the New York municipalities through the NICOM USA program, and whereas Rybrook seeks to enter into a proposed agreement with U Audit Services for standard auditing services of the village's utility expenses, and whereas under the terms of the proposed agreement, U Audit Services would conduct a standard audit of the utility expenses at no upfront cost to the village with payments based on refunded money recovered during the audit at forty percent for each type cost of, um, each cost type stimulated in the, stipulated in the proposed agreement. And whereas Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the agreement with Rybrook and U Audit at no upfront cost to the village with payments based on refunded money recovered during the audit, and for, for each cost type stipulated in the proposed agreement, subject to modification by council, and be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator are hereby authorized to sign and execute any and all necessary documents to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
Now, Chris, we've done this before, we've done this in the.
Yeah, we've done it before and we, it's been a number of years. We did it with, again, a former NICOM group. It's, they literally just take the bills, they look through and make sure everything was charged appropriately backwards and forwards, and if they find savings, last time we got a very significant savings, and this was probably a year, ten years ago.
Right.
So we figured it was, it was time to do it again, and anything they get is a positive because it's, you know, they're going to check through even the camp, cable franchise payments and everything, not looking at the payments themselves necessarily, but have all the right taxes been paid, have all the, um, all the utility rates that are in the agreements, they'll look at the agreements and just make sure there's nothing that was, the definitions were applied appropriately and things like that. So it's, it's money that, if we get it, that's great. It's money that we currently would not be receiving.
Great.
I have a question. Has any other municipality that we know used this?
Yeah, this is, this is an NICOM partner. That's why we use them. That's what we did last time, too.
And they've had success?
Yeah, tons. And we've, we've done it with a different NICOM partner in the past, and actually we used them even going forward for, we had a relationship where we had, they were using them for like cable franchise negotiations where they helped us really define definitions to make sure we were maximizing the way we were getting everything we could on, out of the, from the cable company.
Mm-hmm.
As an example.
And we're not currently having anything looked at cur, uh, now?
No, there's nobody looking at that deep into it, you know? We get the, we get the payments, it tells you how many users, subscribers.
It costs us nothing. I understand. And it's only, I read just briefly here that it's only.
One year.
A percentage of the first year.
Yeah.
And it could be an ongoing savings.
Yep. Oh, yeah, then we get the savings going forward when it's applied appropriately.
Right, so it's great.
If I remember correctly, one of the last times we did this was after we started switching over a lot of the lights to LEDs.
Yeah, we did some of that. We got a lot of money back last time on utility.
Yeah.
And this is stuff we would have no, it's not our comfort area, knowing all the definitions of cable, what we're able to recover versus what the franchise agreements, gets very technical, and so they were able, we got money back, I think, on both cable franchises last time.
Great.
Great, great.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes, Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number three, considering granting an extension of a PUD site plan approval to nine hundred King Street LLC, and are we reading this?
Ralph's drafting some language for us to read.
Okay.
So I'll read the beginning parts and then we'll modify it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Whereas on January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, the Board of Trustees approved a local law amending the village code, and whereas the local law revised the zoning code pursuant to a planned unit development sites and created a new section of code to allow for the development of nine hundred King Street owned by nine hundred King Street Associates for age-restricted and senior housing purposes. And whereas in September two thousand twenty-one, the Board of Trustees approved a PUD concept plan proposed by nine hundred King Street Associates. And whereas under the village site plan, uh, PUD site plan approval makes it valid for eighteen months with extensions authorized to be granted of periods not to exceed six months. And whereas the original PUD approved by the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees expired on March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and whereas on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, the Board of Trustees approved an extension for six months expiring on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Village of Rybrook received a letter from Veneziano and Associates on behalf of nine hundred King requesting an additional extension for a period of six months. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the site plan extension.
Now Ralph?
For a period of three months and upon the filing of a properly completed application by nine, nine hundred King Street Associates to the Westchester County ID, IDA, within such three months extension period, there shall be a further PUD site approval extension for an additional period of three months.
Thank you. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
All right, so, um, you know, I think, I think I speak for the board when I say that, you know, we feel that this is still a positive project for the Village of Rybrook. It's unfortunate that this has taken this long. I know we were going through the EIS process for a long time and then everything changed. And, um, you know, actually that was during the EIS process. And so we've been in pilot negotiations with the, with this development and, you know, obviously at this point we'd like to see movement on this project, um, with especially applications going to the IDA, which helps moves along the pilot process, which gets us closer to construction on this project, which I think is why there was discussion among this, amongst this board of, instead of just straight out granting the six months, putting in some condition there about moving the IDA paperwork forward within that three month period, which we hope will be happening, and submitting that application, which then brings it into that six months extension. Do I think I said that properly?
Well, he's going to read. You're going to draft it, Chris?
Ralph's read it.
Okay.
Three months. If they file with the IDA, it can go to six months.
Okay.
That's a short story.
That's the short, that's what I wanted to hear.
File, complete filing.
Complete application.
Completed application submitted to the IDA.
Yes.
When you retype this, could you capitalize B in Brook on the second whereas?
Yes.
Picky, picky, picky.
You would be. I missed that one. Any question? There it is. Yeah, I see it.
Quick, yeah, one quick question. With, when you file with the IDA, does that get spit back and forth several times, or is that pretty basic application?
Whenever I got, I've received, I'm not sure if the attorneys go back and forth with the IDA. That's possible, but by the time it hits us, it's a complete, it's not with the village.
Okay.
Yeah, that's an independent organization.
Okay, very good.
It's a Westchester County organization.
Yes.
Westchester County IDA.
All right.
I, I would love the phrase, as soon as practicable. I don't, that's really.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Forget it.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes, Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering a proposal from the Housing Action Council to assist tenants in properties enrolled in the NRCS recovery program.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook anticipated, anticipated up to twenty-two properties to be enrolled in the National Resource Recovery Program or the NRCS program, and whereas several properties partaking in the program are occupied by tenants, and whereas the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Act of nineteen seventy, now called, will hereafter called the URA, of the, uh, the Village of Rybrook is required to assist eligible tenants impacted by the program. And whereas Rose Noonan, the Executive Director of the Housing Action Council, has provided the village with a proposal to provide relocation assistance to eligible tenants residing on properties enrolled in the program and enrolled in the URA at a fee of five thousand five hundred dollars per eligible household. And whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to accept the proposal from the Housing Action Council, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the proposal from the Housing Action Council at a fee of five thousand five hundred per household to assist the Village of Rybrook to maintain compliance with the URA. Be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator authorized to sign and execute any necessary documents to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please? I think this is, and Chris, you'll explain it better, but this is another step being taken.
Yep.
To assist the homeowners with this choice that, that they're facing. And what we're trying to do is help people who have been severely affected by flooding within the Village of Rybrook.
So, and this is a program that's specific to those properties that have tenants on the site, and they, so this is a very heavily regulated area where, under the agreement with the NRCS, we need to comply with this particular act, so we don't have a choice, and it's very complicated. So you have to hire, we're hiring the Housing Action Council who works with the village on other affordable housing projects, works, works throughout the county. They've done this in other communities as well. So what they have to coordinate is things like eligible moving expenses or rent utility increases up to a certain dollar value that's required under the program, the utility disconnect and reconnects, and possibly also help with subsidies of rent if they're high, if you can't find comparable rents. So they assist with all that relocation. It's a required thing that we have to do. And at the end of that, we want to help the tenants, and that's the most important. But the other thing that's really nice about it is it's all reimbursable through the NRCS program, including.
It's also a very big.
Including the fee to the Housing Action Council. Everything is reimbursable to the village.
Right. And, you know, again, this is, you know, just more aid to those who are, who are facing this tough, tough choice.
Yep, and the tenants that are in those homes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because this is, right now, I think out of the nine or ten, maybe a three or four tenants, homes with tenants, just to give you a bit of perspective.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Do we still help them if they're moving out of state?
Yeah, that does, I believe so. It's for relocation and where they can find comparable housing. I think it's, I think this is a federal program, isn't it?
Yes.
So it's a federal.
Federal, okay. So and the other program that's also helping them, is that redundant?
No, that's a completely different program. So that's, this is the only program that is wholly for the tenants, for tenants of homeowners.
Oh, renters.
If they're being, if tenants for renters.
So are there many renters?
I just said, out of the nine or ten, I think there's either three or four homes so far.
Great, sorry about that.
That have enrolled.
Sorry.
It's only for renters.
Got it.
They're being displaced, so they need, uh, they're required to get assistance under this act.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes, and Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number five, considering an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Westchester County for curbside textile collection.
Whereas the, Westchester County has on behalf of Refuge Disposal District One, expanded Westchester's textile recycling program to include curbside textile collection in collaboration with Helpsee, a public benefit cor, uh, recycling corporation in White Plains, New York. And whereas the curbside textile pickup service enables residents in participating municipalities to schedule free curbside pickup on designated service days assigned to the municipality and arranged to not conflict with sanitation, curbside collection. And whereas on the textile curbside pickup appointment scheduled by the resident, a Helpsee provider service, provider, that's redundant, but, uh, will visit the residents to retrieve the bag textiles for processing at their facility for refuse or recycling. And whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to enter into proposed agreement with Westchester County for curbside textile recollection under the newly expanded Westchester Textile Recycling Program. And whereas there'll be no costs associated with the proposed agreement, and whereas under the terms of the agreement, Rybrook agrees to stipulate stipulations laid forth in the agreement. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the proposed agreement with Westchester County for curbside textile collection under the newly expanded recycling program in collaboration with Helpsee. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator authorized to sign and execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please? The only question I have with this one is whether in any way it's in conflict with the agreement we have with Benny.
I don't think so, because it's a separate program.
Right.
And it's curbside, it's scheduled, I think they're going to schedule it through the app, right, that they're creating? You can schedule it through the app or there's probably a phone number, and residents will schedule a, a day and a time, I guess, that it would be picked up.
All right, well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, no.
It's a for-profit company that is only going to give you fifteen hundred dollars total, no matter how much you.
It's a convenience for residents to get it picked up at their home.
But there's so many opportunities to give clothing to nonprofits and people that need it in this area. I think that I, personally, I am not, this is, this is, they're making money off of people's donations.
It's the same thing that.
People in the area that need clothing.
And I think.
The clothing drops are all making money, too.
You know, in my, in my household.
Army, they make money, but then they put it back into helping others.
Goodwill, Goodwill sells them.
What's the other?
St. Paul's has it.
Yeah. And I think people will still continue to do that.
They're helping their, but they're saying they may, if I just, I look them up.
I think people will still continue to do that. I know in, I know in my household, you know, the, the only things we bring to Benny is, is, are things that we wouldn't donate anywhere because it's just not usable. You know, we're not, we, we're not going to give it, but anything that's usable, you know, we're either going, uh, to one of the, one of those organizations that you named or a Freecycle types place, or, you know, there's a lot of these places.
Sharing Shelf.
Yeah.
Right.
There's a lot of really good organizations that do, yeah. There's, there's veterans, veterans organizations, but there's also Goodwill who sells it again, but.
Twenty thousand tons.
But the only thing is, you try to create options for residents, and it would be recycled, at least it would, would be reused somewhere. It's for those that would throw it out if they didn't go somewhere.
I think it.
It might be convenient.
So, listen, if, if we go ahead, we send a notice out that lets residents know this is a program, could it be also advertised that this is not, this is for a profit program? This is not, this is for profit?
I don't see why not.
And that if you do not, this is just an option to help you get rid of your clothes instead of bringing them to a, you know, a, uh, clothing bin where they go to homeless instead of bringing them to a, you know, a clothing bin where they go to homeless people or whatever, you know?
Could we let them know about the bins in our parking lot at St. Paul's?
Yeah, right.
All these other alternatives.
Just another option, you're right. It's nice, some people just don't have the strength, or they don't want to go, and they just want to, instead of going to the garbage...
Right, I see it as a lazy option.
What's a lazy option? But, oh, you'd think people were going to say...
Right, I think they're like, oh, I don't have to go to the sharing shelf.
Listen, I'm one to say I threw gar, I threw clothes away in, on a curbside pickup, many times. I also went to the, both, I did both. Sometimes I got lazy and said, forget it, but...
But I think a lot of people, there's other options as well. We recently did one for the vets, you know, where they, they do pick up.
Yes.
So, you know, I think, I think people know of these options.
Well, as long as they're aware that it's for a profit, I think, I can't see why...
So how often are we going to have a bin out? Because that's the other thing, in inclement weather where it's windy or whatever...
No, there's no bin.
There's no bin, this is, people schedule it on their own.
Pick it up at their homes.
They come and pick it up, just like the veterans, et cetera.
Yeah.
They come and pick it up at your home.
As long as it's not...
So it's just another option, then?
Yeah, it's just another. And as long as the residents know what it's for, what the, where the money's going, or where the clothing's going, I think it's...
So this is acting as an endorsement, though, really?
The counties, the counties already done that countywide by doing the agreement.
I don't understand that. Yeah, right?
Yeah.
And they're having it.
This is just allowing it in Rybrook.
I'm just not crazy about the name.
I know.
Helpsee? Well, if you, you look it up, I mean, it discusses, throughout, it discusses all those other organizations that take clothes, and they use it for their best purpose. And it includes, you know, monetizing it for their own use.
Absolutely. A lot of the bins do the same, yeah.
The bins are the same thing.
So what is a, do we have any idea, I know it's been some time since we voted on this, the bin that we have there, we were capped also for a certain amount of tonnage for the amount. Here, you realize that $1,500 is the cap.
We can find out, I'm happy to share, what a reminder, I don't remember how much we received there, but we can ask.
Okay.
I can go look in our file, I can check the treasury tomorrow.
How is this going to be publicized, so that anybody knows about it?
Well, the one thing that, that hasn't come out yet is the county does have, the county's been preparing a countywide app for, for garbage and recycling. So people, what's it called again? What's the app? So we've been entering, all the municipalities are entering in their information on the app. And basically, you download the app, and you'll be able to look up on the app, and you can go, you put in the municipality, you pick up your collection days, and it'll help guide you on what's recyclable, what's not recyclable. It'll tell you holidays, stuff like that. They haven't, it's not ready to be out there. But the other thing they're going to let you do in the app is schedule an appointment through this program. Recycle Coach, that's what it's called.
Recycle Coach.
So these other, other, other programs, other companies, organizations that have these clothing pickups, they don't have to, we don't have to approve, we're not approving any of that stuff, right? So what's, and why?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Somebody's going to like to say something, Jason?
I'm just listening to this, I'm here for this, I'm just learning about it as you guys talk.
If you don't mind, it's so rare we have public comment on things that, like, yeah, well, welcome this. Please state your name and address.
Joel Orango, 126 North Ridge Street.
Thank you.
Why don't you guys just put on the Rybrook residence page, like I did today? I said, hi, chair, for free. I put it on Port Chester Give and Take. Within five minutes?
We do that for a lot of stuff.
I had, I don't know, six people, and I already got rid of it within two hours. My daughter, as she goes through the year, she's now almost five, every season, we put two or three trash bags together, put it on Port Chester Give and Take. Within 20 minutes, the clothes are gone from my house. So if you are worried about people making money off of this, just go to Rybrook Residence or Port Chester and say, hey, here's a great way to recycle your clothes. Give it to, just say, give it away for free, and that's that. Like, and this company can go, you know...
It's just an option, yeah.
Like, you just have to inform people that, you know?
There's options.
And if they don't want a stranger coming to their house, then, I don't know, drop it off at the curb right here, you know, assign a time, and just pick it up or something like that.
Well, we have a bin in our parking lot.
Yeah, but nobody can, a person can't reach into that bin and grab it out. I'm saying, like, say you needed baby clothes, I would physically meet you and give you, you know, a season's worth of baby's clothes, and say, here you go, here's $1,000 worth of clothes for free, because my daughter used it already, and I don't need it.
And I, and I think you're right, absolutely, a lot of residents do that. We did spring cleaning in January, and then, and you saw...
I, I, I only know, my friend actually got your...
Oh, the train table?
The train table.
Oh, your friend, okay, yes.
For her grandchildren.
We'll put it on hold.
Phenomenal, yeah, we know, we cleaned, we cleaned house recently and, and did exactly that, where we, we gave a lot of it away, so. And I think that's where a lot of people will continue to do this. I think it's really, this is saying the county's offering, and so we're, we're saying we'll offer it as well, since... Right.
Right, there's so much need also.
Yeah.
That's why I feel that way.
To make a decision tonight, right?
There are also a tremendous number of organizations out there that will pick stuff up. I'm arranging to have all my old DVDs picked up tomorrow by Breast Cancer Awareness. Because nobody wants DVDs, but they will take them.
I want to know what some of these are, I don't want to...
Really?
Baseball documentaries?
You laugh. Actually, it's mostly movies. But, yeah, I'm giving them 12 cartons of DVDs.
Wow, okay.
All right, so, we're good? Move on, vote?
We have all of the old age homes, like at Atria?
They don't want DVDs.
They don't want DVDs?
No, they don't want it, no.
I can't believe it.
There's so much stuff you can't get rid of these days, so it's...
Really? All right, well, I'm all for nonprofits getting it.
Yeah, and I think, and I think you're right, when we send out notice, we can send out notice about other, you know, that there still remain the normal channels, and people are still going to do it anyway, because that's what they've been doing.
If this is going to be approved tonight, then I think the notice should be very...
Yeah, and it's not happening.
Get everything available.
And it's not happening yet anyhow. We're going to be waiting for other things to catch up. We're just kind of setting it up.
Yep, all right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser? Trustee Morino? Yes, Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering approving the minutes of the village board meeting held on October 10th, 2023.
Shall we move?
Wait, we need to, we need to have a... Give Chris some...
Now therefore be, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees...
I love your enthusiasm, though.
...approves the minutes for the meeting held on October 10th, 2023.
It was a pod.
Now, can I have a motion in second, please?
Shall we move?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass, all opposed?
Such a fun group.
All right, Administrator's report.
Just a couple of updates. So the NRCS program, we currently have, it's been extended to, the deadline has been extended to either accept the program or withdraw, accept the appraisals or withdraw up to March 16th. So we decided, which is the latest date everybody had anyhow. So this way, some people have a little bit more time, so it also gets everybody on the same timeframe and the same schedule. So March 16th is the deadline on that, and we have nine so far, although I think we're going to have 10 by the end of the night. Village elections are March 19th, and they'd be from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That's for two trustee positions, and both Susan Epstein and David Heiser, both on the board now, are, are the two people that have submitted the application, sorry, submitted the petitions to the County Board of Elections. So everyone, please come out, it is important to vote. Third item is, Millennium's done really well, I don't know if everybody's been seeing that our grant writer has been getting, we have, I think, 250 as of January, 250,000 in grants with, with no contributions, which is great. And four or five other grants are starting to really roll in. I think we've gotten two more acceptance this...
It's on here?
Huh? It's in our monthlies. And then, I think we got two more accepted already this month, so we have even more rolling in. It's really starting to pick up now, which is great, yeah.
I'm very happy, thank you.
And really good programs, like some of the ones we have are things like, what we wanted to do to revisit, like Richmond Park flooding issues and stuff like that, which we've done all the projects from that old study. We've worked our way through from north to south, now we're able to go back and look 10 years later and say, is there anything else we could look at, things like that? Yeah, so that's great. So it's another opportunity for, for things like that. Let's see, also, the next meeting, we're going to have Ramble Engineering, which is, they've been looking at the Brook Lane and other streets there to see if there's ways. We said we're going to take a third look at it, and they have come up with some different solutions to help, help reduce flooding. I'll never say eliminate flooding on that, but they have some interesting ideas and different cost options where that we can perhaps, we're going to have an overview or a presentation of some ideas that they have to try to reduce some of the flooding in Brook Lane area to some extent. Again, it's never going to reduce it, but it's never going to eliminate it, but anything we could do to help reduce would be a positive. So once we have those projects identified and probably analyzed a little bit more, we can then go after grants to try to fund some of those projects. So we'll have them come and give an overview at the next meeting, and we let the residents know that, too.
Chris?
Yeah.
Concerning the Westmore News article about the NRCS program, one of the things that was not in the article, which I think is really important, and it affects the, is our ability of the offer, is that they don't have to pay a brokerage fee.
Oh, yeah. No, absolutely.
3%, so when they say they can get an extra X number of dollars if they sell it on their own, but they're going to pay 3% right off the top.
Yep. Yeah, and we've made those points in our, in our last Zoom meeting, too. And we said those, yeah, there's another, no, there's another 3% there, plus the, up to 3% from the, from the nature conservancy. So those are two other avenues for additional funds, you know, to stay.
Even if it's, if you use the 625 number, that's really 6% higher.
Yeah.
Which brings it a lot closer to their alleged 675 that they can get.
That's right, absolutely. So, great. So we're just preparing, we're, we're going through the next process to look at the properties. By March 16th, we'll know what can be done, depending on how many in a row. We'll may look at different designs and engineering there. But, you know, we'll start, you know, our goal is to have these closings all in 2024. Some much earlier in the year, and some throughout the year, the others throughout the year. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Before we move on to the discussion item, I am going to open up this meeting to public comment. And I guess we'll go in order that, okay. I was going to go in order that it's on the paper here, so. So please just, you know, state your name and...
So I came here like a month or two ago talking about speeding. I just wanted to know if any progress has been made. I know police officers are sitting in my driveway, because I see them, I saw them there this morning, and people are zooming by, and they get them, but I don't know if they get them enough, and they're not slowing down. What I've seen recently is when we had snow days, kids were crossing the street on North Ridge into Crawford Park, people were zooming by, and these kids are standing there with their sleds. I actually stopped, and somebody almost hit me, because I stopped for a pedestrian. I just constantly see people speeding, and I don't know if you, you said you were going to try to get a study done? I don't know if there's any progress on that, if there's any progress on signage, if there's, you know, yield to pedestrian signs, children at play signs, anything like that. The summer is getting closer, so I know my five-year-old already is asking to go to Crawford Park. And we crossed the street from my driveway, walked on the sidewalk, and then crossed the street back, because we don't really want to walk on the grass and everything. And people just don't, like, I get frustrated. I would love to throw something into the middle of the street, and I know that's bad, but, you know, but that's, I feel like that might actually open eyes if somebody, you know, gets into an accident, or, you know, he got hit by a car on Lincoln Avenue. You know, we wait and, you know, does the town want to wait for somebody to die?
It will open lawyer's eyes, for sure.
My wife's a lawyer.
Okay.
She lives, we got a security camera, so she'll see everything. But, you know, what are we doing? I came here two months ago, has any progress been made? If not, then I'm...
Sure, yeah, I mean, the chief, the chief has, chief's been looking at the enforcement issue, right, Greg? They've been trying to put more attention there. And in terms of the engineer, engineering group, which is Hardisty and Hanover, which is a planning and engineering firm, they give, we have a proposal, we have an existing proposal from them, it's just more costly than I would think it should be, so we're just negotiating the, the price on that. But we're looking at alternative, because it's, you have a rise in the street that drops pretty quickly. You can't put a crosswalk, there's no crossing there with traffic control. Usually you would want to put a crossing, it's usually, it's much better when there's a traffic control device or a stop, or something that's more visible, that, that will stop traffic. When you don't, and you have it in the middle of the road without that stoppage, then, and particularly there, it's hard to describe, sitting here at the dais, but coming from north to south, there's a rise that you can't see the cars very easily. So the warning, we have to really plan out the distance on the warning for the crossing before that rise, before the rise gets down. So in other words, you, you can't cross, well, you're, you're not supposed to be walking across there, because there's no fixed crosswalk. That's what we're trying to do. So some of the options we're looking at there, and there's things like road diets and things that they call that will basically narrow the street in a particular area, but you need a lot of warnings to get up, to lead up to that. It's not as, not as easy as throwing down a crosswalk and, and a children at play sign.
Well, the park was there before houses were there.
Why put a park there? Like, people in this neighborhood walk, so you're saying everyone that goes to Crawford Park needs to drive there?
That's the way it is now. It's not intended to cross. No, it's the way it's in, the, the traffic, the tra, I know a lot of people walk there. That's why we're trying to find, is there a solution that will be safe for people to cross? What we don't want to do is put a crosswalk in that's unsafe.
I, I think also, it's, you should understand, it's not our park.
Yeah.
All right, then who do we talk to?
Well, the street, Ridge Street is ours.
It is ours.
The park is, is the town's.
It's complicated.
And you also can't cross, it gets a little bit more, I'm kind of getting into more of the weeds, but you also can't cross to a crosswalk the way it is, the way it is with the, you need to have a landing area, there's ADA issues. And you have to be able to, where there's currently a wall, will have, would have to be pulled back. So it has to be designed both to meet the code and to done safely. Those are the two issues.
So right now, the way it is, it's unsafe. So possibly doing something about it might make it more unsafe, even though most likely not would probably make it more safe.
It would, it would expose the village, it would expose the village and the taxpayers to a lot of liability.
It sounds like the way the book is written is somebody, like, really needs to die by getting hit.
That's not fair.
And then, oh, somebody opens their eyes.
No, that's not fair. What you do is you have to design something that's safe.
Right.
A safe way to cross that meets the code, which is doable.
Which is why we need to work with consultants.
It's not our code.
Who can I go talk to, like, that actually gets somebody...
The federal government, right, the MUTCD?
MUTCD is a federal requirement.
Yeah.
And traffic control devices must be engineered and designed. And that's what we are doing right now, that's going to take some time to do, but we are exploring.
The MUTCD is, is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which, which decides crossings.
And, you know, five-year-olds are going to be possibly running out into the street.
You don't, it's not designed for people to cross there.
Thank God, nobody's gotten hit yet, but that's the problem, it's always...
It's not designed for people to walk across the street there, even though people do, which is why you have to come up with a, you're supposed to drive across right now. That's not reasonable, and people are not doing it, that's why we're trying to come up with an alternative. That's existed for decades, or it just takes a little bit of time to design it properly.
I don't know, I just feel like...
Just to respond to something you said, why put a park there? The park antedates the houses.
Yeah.
So in other words, why put houses?
Why put houses there, right?
But now, there are houses there, so you need to update what the park is, is doing. So...
If you just slap a...
When houses were built, crosswalks should have been built, because if you live across the street...
If you put a crosswalk there...
Would you drive across the street?
If you put a crosswalk there with the rise in the street, the way the engineers looked at it, that would be, we're telling people to cross here, and while people do have, New York State have to stop a crosswalk if they don't see the crosswalk, it's unsafe to cross. So that's why you have to give advance notice, you got to slow down the traffic, and you got to let people know there's something up ahead.
I don't know if you guys have seen, there's something in Europe that people are using, and maybe your wife posted it. It's a photo, a three-dimensional photo, that is on the ground, that looks like a kid crossing the street. And it's literally painted on the ground, and as you come up to it, because the way it's drawn, it looks like it's upright, but it's not. It's down.
Never saw that one.
Yeah, across the heart of that.
It's, it's in use in Europe.
Interesting.
Called. What is it called?
I honestly don't know. I just saw a picture of it, and somebody wrote, this is what they do in Europe to slow people down. And it's like, it looks like a three-dimensional figure on the ground, and it's like a child playing basketball. And it's really weird.
It's weird, yeah.
I sent you the picture.
Yeah, I'm curious, I'm curious. But basically, what you have to do is you have to do a lot of lead-in, so you have to lead in on the traffic coming down that they know there's a crosswalk there. And there's different ways to design that. You could narrow it down, you could do signage, you could do blinking lights, you could do a lot of different things. There's ways to illuminate it at night, because then you have night issues. So there's things you need to do to let people know there's a crosswalk coming up, you need to slow down. And that's, that's what you have to design, because of the drop in the roadway. They won't see it coming.
Okay. And then signage with no crosswalk, like, yield to pedestrians, like, if you see a pedestrian, like, you slow down?
You shouldn't be yielding to somewhere where people shouldn't be crossing right now.
You can't put the sign up unless it's all planned out.
And children at play signs, I'd never recommend. They, they've been proven over and over again not to work. The people, makes people feel good, but they, there's a billion studies out there that say, children at play is not a, not a very good sign, and really doesn't work. It gives almost a, a false sense.
Okay. All right, I don't know, and we're basically...
And we're continuing to look...
No, we're not, we're, we're getting an engineer to do the work.
Look into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we may have an engineer looking further into it, designing.
Yeah, we're just kind of, we're just working on the cost of it right now.
Okay. Sir?
Scott Cooper, 39 Lincoln Avenue, Rybrook.
Talking to the mic, please?
15 years. I have addressed some issues with Chris, he's been very responsive for the issues. But some of the things just aren't getting done, and I'm just curious as to when you think that things can get finished. I know there's been a lot of work on Lincoln Avenue, it's been a mess. And now with all the rain and the mud, and they took the cones away from in front of Talcott, they drain, they dredge the, they dredge the lake there.
The basin, yep.
They have a huge, I guess, sludge, sludge, container thing. They've done this before, but...
Yeah.
I was just wondering, is, I've pulled permits for everything, is this, does that require a permit?
Yeah, actually, Michael, do you mind just kind of skip? Yeah, actually, Michael, do you mind just kind of give a summary of what they're doing there? This way people have a better understanding, but yeah, there's a mess right there. We wholly agree.
Okay. I'm not here to complain.
No, it's okay. We, we, we just can't, you know, it's really a spring, it'll be restored in the spring as soon as the weather, as soon as the ground loosens up.
So the, the retention pond at Talcot at the entrance of these stormwater pipes, it tends to silt up, okay, and starts the sediment, which affects the pipes. So every, so often Talcot hires a consultant who comes out there and they dredge that area, which is typically called a four bay. And they restore the elevation and the capacity of that. As part of our project, that silt and sediment is pumped into what's called a silt sack, which is what you see over there. And that's meant to de-water the silt, the sediment will stay in there. And after a few weeks, once it dries out, it'll be cut open and that the dirt or sediment will be spread and it'll be, um, tops are all seeded. They did receive a permit under our code for work. It is a permitted item for maintaining stormwater management. They did test the material as well at my request. No contaminants were found in there, which they're all under the state requirements levels. So anything that was disturbed should be restored. I forgot the name of the company, but I am in communication with them and I'll make sure that it is restored to what it should be.
So a couple of little things, so we, they're required to restore what they, what they've disturbed, that's one thing. And then in the spring, we're trying to, we want to come up with something to put there to be a barrier for people. It is a heavily, a lot of utilities under the ground, so it's a little difficult. But we're trying to come up with something that will, we can put there that will block vehicles, particularly utility trucks and so forth that park there otherwise. We even had, we even bought stuff in the winter, you know, the poles, the, to put in the ground and put them out just to, just to prevent people from thinking they could park there. But right when we were putting them out, that's when they started that work. So we literally have them sitting in our highway garage until, until they're done.
Yeah, I put them out in front of my house instead of the rocks. You know, I got the letter from Michael back in June.
Yeah.
I took the rocks up right away. There are still rocks across the street from there. I know maybe you and I had a discussion about the property that the rocks are on is Rybrook taxes and the property that owns the property in front of it is Harrison.
Yes.
There was an error in there, so I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember, we'll never made it to that.
So, like I said.
But they shouldn't have them either.
We have, I don't know all the information. I don't, you know, maybe we should have gotten a letter as to what was going on on the street. We've spoken to other people who were like, what's going on on the street, you know? It seems like they're done, but one day they came and they picked up all the pipes for the Iron Mountain, like.
Yep.
One day they picked them up on a Wednesday and the next, like, they spent two and a half hours during, between three and five, it was.
Yeah, you had a series of things happening here. So you have, you had three different activities going on. You had the basin that was being done through Talcot, by Talcot. You had Iron Mountain who was doing, they do, huh? Green Mountain, Green Mountain, Iron Mountain's the, the.
The paper.
The paper. Green Mountain, which is doing, they doing the relining or they, of Westchester, Westchester County sewer line. So they were in there relining the sewer line, totally separate project, just happened to be both at the same time kind of going on.
They were alternating.
Alternating, yes.
So paper has been.
So you saw a lot of different types of activity going on there, it was busy. The good news is I think all that area is done.
So normally it wouldn't say anything, but there's been a gas, gas leak, the steel plates are still there. A week ago, two weeks ago, there's been a water main, another water main break in addition to the one we had right in front of our house during the day that it flooded. Um, which all comes back to eventually me getting hit by a car on January 18th, walking in the street. I have pictures, there was snow on the ground, there's no place to walk, there are certain places along Lincoln Avenue where you have to walk in the street. There's guardrails, there's the storm drain area that has a guardrail and then there's just overgrowth on the curve right before you get to Crawford Park. And then when you get to Crawford Park, they fixed the sewer storm entry drain there. But there's running water that runs down into the gravel and there's like a one-foot deep trench there where the water collects. So you can't walk on the side, you have to walk in the street even where there's the curving, right, before you can get into the, into the park. Um, we got a new dog back in June.
Had a cancer.
Took care of the asphalt that had been putting down, but that area, if you don't do something there, they're still doing it. They've started again since the cones were removed, since they removed the asphalt with the garbage. I saw a truck the other day, they had put a porta potty for the workers doing the dredging. And I saw a Westmore gas oil truck.
Still parked there. Oh, I know, they keep parking there.
But there's no, if they, I, I know that Mike has said you can't put a curb, I don't know why, but how do we keep people from pulling off over there and throwing their garbage out? And their urine bottles from the gardeners and all the delivery trucks and, I mean, I have the photos, I don't need to show you, but it's just.
It's a, it's a road that doesn't have underground, uh, storm sewers. So it has, so basically that's why you can't put curbing in, because the curbs are meant to bring water, to convey water to a storm source, storm drains. So what you, there, what you have is the water as a sheet floats, goes off to the side of the road, goes into that gravel, those gravel areas and the dirt areas. So there's gravel underneath there and it goes into the ground there. So that's why you can't put, if you put curbing in, you're going to cause flooding in the street. Um, that would be a problem.
There's curving across the street from us, which during their, um, the Green Mountain guys destroyed the curb with their forklift putting the pipes there. I sent.
I know, on the, on the east side, there's no curving, right? Because that's, that's where it drains off.
On the east side is my side, on the west side is the curving.
Yeah.
Which, there's no drain there either, but there's curving. Um, a curb, we've asked for 15 years on and off if they could put one in front of our house. It'll solve the problem of people pulling off or driving on the grass. We've removed the rocks immediately when we were asked to and we have people parking and driving on the grass.
Mm-hmm. So I think the best solution is to come up with some kind of a barrier on the side of the road where people can't park. That's my opinion. Curbing is going to cause a different problem.
No parking, no littering sign?
The parking, yeah, we, we can do that, but that's not, they're not going to do much. You put that, but you want signage, more signage, I think that makes it look worse, but we could. But I think what you really need to do is prevent cars from parking there. You need to put something in the side of the road. It's a difficult spot because of the utilities are all underneath there, but we can, we're trying to do something there. Even if we dig by hand, we try to do something. You have any thoughts?
Originally, excuse me, originally what the plan was, was to re-beautify that area, do what we did and Mr. Cooper did remove the rocks, few other homeowners did receive the same memo.
And our highway guys cleaned it up and.
Highway guys did go back, so I apologize about that.
They did the grass, but then it rained that afternoon and it all, and then he went back and fixed it again.
So the intent was to come in and replant a whole bunch of trees along that whole area. However, when we did the code 53, the mark out, you come to realize there's a 30-inch drain line, there's an eight-inch high-pressure gas main, there's a eight-inch water line, there's fiber, there's MCI, there's cable, all underground within that first 15 feet of roadway. So you pretty much can't plant anything there. Even putting mile markers, and we've talked about it, I've talked about even small mile marker posts, um, it's literally falling within that mark out area. So you can, almost anything you try to dig, excavate or install in the ground, you're potentially hitting one of those utilities.
We literally got the winter post just to try to put them in, but that's when Talcot started.
I, I don't know if that's a no parking area.
I don't know.
I don't think it is.
No, it's not regulated.
There's no signage there, so either way you couldn't enforce it.
Cars can park there, but if that was made a no parking area, then we could.
You can enforce it, yeah. So we could do that, we could put in the code.
Is that the area where it's, it's the route that, is it a line is more, it's the one side than the other?
There's gravel, it's just north of Talcot. It's in front of Talcot, Greg.
Why don't we put meters there?
All right, thanks.
Mr. Cooper? Mr. Cooper?
Huh?
Do you have a picture?
Cars go off the side of the road and they get damaged and now you, now you, now you're going to get sued.
Do you have a picture of exactly what we're talking about?
Yeah, I do.
You're not supposed to put rocks on.
I would love to know what we're talking about.
Don't do it anymore.
Why don't we put a P meter and charge people? And then you can have tickets when their parking expires.
So I don't think we was putting. Okay. And they were doing the street, I spoke to Chris.
They just put millings there?
So they're just, they, someone was creating what I call a truck stop.
Right.
Because they flattened it, so that way their truck comes up, right?
Chris took care of it, it's been removed and they planted grass and then it rained that day, so the grass got washed away. And then they fixed it again with a, an aerator, so the grass is, was more even. They lined the street with cones, but since they've been doing work, when the guys came to dredge the, the lake, they removed the cones. So now the trucks and even the guys dredging the cones.
We've been trying different things, it's just.
Right.
But now it's just, it's, so what would happen is people.
Can't use planters either because somebody hits them. Right, which is horrible.
You may find some that are collapsible.
Walking the dog to the park and she was, a little puppy, like, four months old, she would pick up everything that's there and there were sneaker boxes, there's urine bottles.
People just toss it outside, terrible.
Pull over there, park and toss the stuff out and from our backyard, if there's not foliage on the trees or when they're just starting, you see the guys going into the woods to urinate from our deck. You know, we've pulled every permit, we've done everything that we're supposed to do. We just got the seal last winter for our kitchen, that took forever to do. We've done everything we're supposed to do, we just want to enjoy the.
Right.
The neighborhood, which I walk through Crawford Park all the way around, through Pine Ridge and back down, like, an hour walk. And, you know, you know, we, we were asked to move the rocks, these are the rocks right across from the trucks.
And that kept the other trucks from parking there.
They're not there, but now those are all out of whack because of the piping that they were doing, which they ran the thing through.
Yeah, this is. No, it's in front of Talcot.
Why is it illegal to have the rocks, Mike?
So under our code, there is language that if, that if objects are within the right of way, which may pose a safety hazard or a health risk, that they be removed. New York State DOT also regulates their roadways and does not recommend any boulders within the right of way. So if a car hits it, a car could potentially go airborne.
Right.
That's the concern.
Right, and I would fall on it.
Or the rock will go flying in.
Somebody wants to look, that's the Talcot work that was being done. I took pictures of them parking.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
It's not the right solution.
And what happened is more and more rocks have been popping up around the village, so hence I sent out the memo.
Got it.
But this is what typically.
And it's the same thing with, if you put a log there and not a rock?
Anything that can impede the flow of traffic.
This is when the utilities are there, other than that, that's not happening, right?
So guys, just to kind of, just to kind of pull it back, so let's talk about, Scott, so, well, we could, huh? So what we could do is let's, let's kind of bring it in. So we, the restoration's going to be done as soon as the weather is, is sufficient, right, by Talcot. Um, the village is going, can, can maybe put in no parking in that area and the police can enforce that. And then we got to come up with some kind of barrier off the side that is acceptable and meets, meets what we need to do, that we can do in the utility area. That's really the solution. We've tried different things, we're going to continue to try other ones.
So, just as.
You want to come here to remind you?
Yeah, please.
Good, thank you for the, I did ask him.
Okay, so we've gone through a lot in the last, last year. And we had the flooding, same day we had the water main break because the storm drain undermined the end of the water main. And it blew the cap off, which then flooded across Lincoln Avenue to the side that was already flooded. But the thing is, it comes back to, again, the speeding and the non-enforcement of the traffic laws. That is, even the police have seen it. So now on that day, the police officers were parked in my driveway and the people, even with the water and the boulders in the road, didn't, don't slow down. They don't, they just 40, 50 miles an hour, like, and the police officer came the day of the flood, he was like, this is insane. Um, when I was hit by the car, the officer said, there should be somebody here with a speed, speed gun. He's like, we've seen it now with the police officers. And the interesting thing is when Con Ed is doing the polls, there's a police officer at the, at one end and at the other end. They're in their cars. The people still don't slow down, but at least the police were there. With the Green Mountain guys, there were no police. So the day I got hit by the car was by the guardrail on that part, you can't walk, it was snow-covered, ice-covered, you had to walk in the street. So before I walked out in the street, there were two trucks on the opposite lane. So people coming from, down from the hutch would have had to go in the wrong direction lane, but I was walking against traffic, so they would have been coming from behind me. Before I walked out in the street, I saw the two trucks there and I looked behind me to make sure there was no traffic coming and I started walking. But by the time, and there was no traffic coming from in front of me, around the curve, somebody was, started coming. I was already three-quarters of the way to the area where, before I could even step off to the side. She didn't slow down and she couldn't go into the other lane to go, to avoid me. But 30 miles an hour, I got hit by the car. When I asked if she saw me, she said, yes, she saw me, but I was walking in the middle of the street.
Because you had no alternative.
So I said, um, I said, I'm a pedestrian. And she said, well, you weren't crossing the street, you were walking in it. I said, and she goes, there was nobody there directing traffic, so I just assumed I would go around you. Okay, now, there were police officers at the corner of Pine Ridge and Lincoln Avenue, but there was nobody where these two trucks were. This is the mentality. I said to her, do you need to, some, for someone to tell you to slow down and not hit pedestrian?
Common sense, right? Slow down if you're coming up to construction.
The law is, is three, you're supposed to give them three feet, but I give people, I, how about you stop? How about, like, this is, so I know, you know, and then again, two weeks ago, I had on collision in front of our house. This is a recurring thing and like Joe said, what has to happen for somebody to do something? I, I don't know, like, they redid the walkways in Crawford Park, maybe you can do the same thing with the asphalt and that way people. But I have pictures of people walking their dogs, even when there's no snow, they're not walking on the, on the grass, they're walking in the street.
It's not, yeah, and the, the road's not designed for that because there is no sidewalks and you shouldn't be walking on Lincoln Avenue in the street. But, so it's not designed to be a walking street for sure. I know you do and I get it.
Okay, so.
But it's not a design for it.
Separate issues here.
And the other part is the construction. So just keep in mind whether the police are there or whether the, it's just a contractor has to do it. They're required to do traffic control and we have the right to shut them down. I think in that case, it was a, I think, I think that case was a Westchester County project. So it wasn't our project, but we could still shut them down on our street, but you realize that wasn't our project.
They're required to have flaggers.
It wasn't our project, it was a county, it was a county main they were doing.
Right, so. Right, so they would have to, and I think.
You'd have to contact them and go through it.
I guess the issue you started on is, is more the.
Cleanup.
Area, yeah, to clean up the area along the pond on, on Talcot. And it sounds like we have solutions.
That'll be done from, by Talcot as soon as the weather's good.
Yeah. And then we have to figure out.
We could do no parking and then we got to try to come up with something, a barrier of some kind.
To actually prevent people from parking.
So when you look up a property in Rybrook, it mentions the parks, it mentions you can walk to the parks. So if you live on Pine Ridge or that whole area, there's no sidewalks there either. But I see kids, children, walking and riding their bicycles and riding unicycles, motorized unicycles, up and down Lincoln Avenue. So how are we supposed to get, how are the kids supposed to get to the park? You know, you mentioned sidewalk and I'm, and that's kind of like.
You can't put a sidewalk there where the drain, it would have to be on the inside of the drainage.
How are you supposed to get to the park from my house to Crawford Park?
I'm being, I'm not trying to be argumentative, what I'm trying to say is the road is not designed as pedestrian-friendly. It's not meant to be a pedestrian walkway.
Okay, but the speed limit on Lincoln Avenue is the same as it is on Pine Ridge and everywhere else around there. And they're not going 30 miles an hour and I understand.
That's, that's, which is another issue, absolutely.
So that's what the issue is, that's why I decided to come tonight and after getting hit by the car. The people are speeding and nothing is being done about it. I noticed for the first time last Friday, there was a white interceptor, because you can hear it when they go after somebody. That's the first time that any, any, I've seen any police trying to enforce it. I, the day I went to pick up the accident report, I saw the same officer who took the report. I said, is there anything you guys could do? I just, I'm trying to get some, slow them down a little bit.
We can, we can do that. I mean, what you do is we put out the signage, we have the radar signs, right? We can schedule it in that area, we can put out the radar signs and then you do the enforcement. We can schedule it in that area, we can put out the radar signs, and then you do the enforcement right after it.
So you put the radar sign out, it, it is there, it's not in the best place where, you know, I know, it doesn't matter, but the sign doesn't light up, it doesn't work, and when you first put it out, my wife came home, and I said, oh, they put the sign out. She was going thirty miles an hour, it shows twenty-eight, so it's, it's under recording the speed, but. I, I, I think people speed up when they see the sign like that.
And we record, and it gets recorded, so that, that's not only telling motorists what the, what it is, but it's also recording, right, the speeds. And then we're able to look and see how fast people are actually going on the road. You can actually not have the display on and still record it, so people think it's off, but it's still recording.
And also, the issue with the sign is, you know, on this street, and also on Lincoln Avenue, and certain roads where there's a lot of traffic, it uses more battery power, and the batteries, you know, drain, and the sign goes dead quicker, because, you know, there's thousands of cars that pass through, pass the sign.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why a lot of time, the sign will be up there, and within a day or so, it's, it's, uh, it's dead because of the number of cars that pass through.
And I offered to change the batteries, I asked Sergeant Dengler, Mike, can I keep the batteries in my garage? Because I see the sign going dead, because I walked my mailbox, walked on.
Couldn't do that.
Can I do it? And he's like, he never answered.
Oh, because it's, it's not, it's not, it's not an expectation for you to do that.
Yeah, we couldn't.
We have signs that are solar-powered, but those signs have to be permanent. The sign on, um, on King Street is solar-powered, the sign on Hawthorne Avenue is hardwired, so those signs don't go dead. The sign on Leek, the sign on King Street sometimes goes dead because the battery dies, but it's solar-powered. As soon as the sun comes out, the battery charges. Uh, that sign that's on, that we put on throughout the village is a, is a, um, a sign that we put everywhere, so we can't have a solar panel on it to charge the batteries, so the batteries have to be charged. Highway, Highway Department changes the batteries. We all know, their workload, so the last thing I want to do is call up Highway, say the battery's dead, because, you know, they, you know, they, they have a lot on their plate also.
So how do we get, how do we get a hard line in there? I'll give you the electricity, I'll run an essential one. I don't care about, I just want things done.
Well, that sign, that's.
And when you say you can't change the battery, well, why not? If they're too busy, you guys are too busy, if I work from home and I can go change a battery, then why not? Like, we're all trying to get the same thing done here. We're trying to get safety first, and, you know, if you don't let me do something to help, then, you know, nothing's getting done. Like, and that's the problem. Like, you talk about, you know.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair, but I think things are getting done, but we're trying to explain the limitations very openly and honestly. The battery dies, so then we gotta replace it, right? So when you see it's dead or not on, two things could be. One, we sometimes have it off because it's still recording, and we want to see how fast the traffic's going. Other times, just needs to get a new battery replacement, or recharge.
So, I came tonight to ask, or appeal to you guys, to, maybe the police can, I spoke to Sergeant, um, Deng.
Dengler?
Dengler. He was very nice. He said he has seen what I was expressing to him. Is there any way that we can start enforcing it for, I don't know, write a couple of tickets a day and, and then be done? Like, I, I know that manpower was mentioned, um, but it's really four minutes of fear and terror walking to the park. I'm gonna continue to walk to the park. I want to enjoy the village, I want to enjoy the park. And why shouldn't we be able to walk to the park? I mean, that's what it's there for. I mean, kids can't drive to the park, they're gonna ride their bikes to the park, they're in the street. I have pictures of people walking side-by-side in the street, and the cars don't slow down. I have people on bikes, riding side-by-side on bicycles, and the cars are honking at them or whatever. It's thirty miles an hour, it's not Purchase Street, which is forty-five. It's thirty miles an hour.
I, we will do what we can to try to slow the traffic down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, thank you, Greg. I know that you're giving it good efforts. All right. Um, the last item on our agenda is a discussion item regarding green building code. Do you want to lead us off?
Okay.
Want me to lead us off?
Sure, I'll set the table, how about that? So, back in February of twenty-twenty.
A while ago.
Pre-COVID, is what it was. Uh, the village, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Just about.
As COVID was coming, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to call twenty-twenty pre.
Pre, well, that's when we started, pre.
Pre, pre-us.
So there was, uh, the village was talking about the options for creating a more green building code, and, uh, if you remember at that time, Keenan Bean was working with Sarah Brown, uh, from Hardisty and Hanover, to give different options. Uh, they did a report for the village, which, um, I think that's in, it's back, in backup in the agenda item, and she came, Sarah came and gave some options, they looked at other municipal codes, gave some suggestions about how to look at this. I know the board, um, felt strongly to try to provide, uh, make it more incentive-based for residential properties, and more, um, code-based requirements for more commercial properties, that they knew construction have to follow, you know, would be required to build more stringent code, and residentials would be encouraged, whether it be fee reductions or zoning modify, zoning leeway, if they did certain green construction. Um, so that's where the board left off, and then we were talking about it for a good long while, and then things kind of changed, where we kind of disappeared on this issue because of, I think, COVID then at that point.
I think COVID.
And, uh, so now, so we said, we should really go back and revisit, because not much has happened since then.
Right, and my, my, if my memory serves me correctly, you know, we were kind of stuck in this hard place because, you know, in order to, you know, you could incentivize by having people conform to an existing code that exists, you know, by getting certifications, but that has to go through a private entity.
Yes.
Or, we could create our own set of requirements or parameters with which to incentivize, you know, residents, but that would put undue burden on the building department. So we were really kind of in this, in this hard place of not knowing where is, you know, as a small community, where to go here. And, and, and we were starting that debate, and then, yeah, the brakes were put on full, so, um.
Because eventually, what happened, Sarah's gonna come back with a modified, trying to reflect some of the board's desires, and then you guys were gonna refer to the Sustainability Committee for more, more kind of refining. And, um, but I think it's that, a lot of times passed, I think it's gonna have, require a little bit of getting back up to speed.
Right, and I think it will, I think it absolutely will, and I think you're right that it's potentially a task force, you know, bringing people to, from sustainability, from planning, um.
Village Board.
Village Board, together to, to look at this as all, I mean, I don't know how everyone feels about that.
Yeah, well, we gotta.
We want to revisit the conversation.
When?
Basically, what we had talked about was, um, at the time, you know, and again, we had a different mayor, we had a different chair of a Sustainability Committee, which I think, you know, Paul was mayor, I think Stephanie was probably chair of the Sustainability Committee at the time.
Um, yeah.
You know, a different board, and, you know, at the, at the time, we, what we had, what we had discussed was potentially requiring for commercial development, and then incentivizing for residential development by basically saying, all right, if you meet certain standards, you may get a percentage off of your build, you know, off of your building permits and fees and everything.
Um, my only thing that I want to say, I, I firmly support this. I, just from all the expensive construction and everything, I hate to put any more burden, monetary burden on builders or commercial entities. I almost think that maybe it's something we can explore to incentivize both commercial and residential to do it, and offer, you know, a discount or something for both of them, because I just, I feel like it's just, you know, the costs are so high, and everybody has to buy, get all these permits and everything, that I'd hate to ask people to pay more money.
Well, and that's why we had talked about incentivizing for.
So I think for commercial and residential, we should do it, not just residential.
Well, and again, this would be something, we're not, we're, we don't have to decide on this at all right now.
Right, that just makes you.
This is, this is more just about, you know, bringing the conversation back.
You know, real quick, you know, the state energy code is pretty strict right now, and it's just getting stricter. There's the code, new codes coming out, and I think you're gonna find that we wouldn't have to do any of this, because the state's gonna mandate it with the building code, with the building code requirements. So, you know, I mean, something to think about, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't discuss and talk about it, but we should really look at what the future's bringing us with the, with the energy code right now, because it's. It's a, it's a book that's an inch and a half thick, and it supersedes any other code when it comes to doing something.
And as we all know, not to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Because I know this is what you're doing, and you say more than we do, but. The cost of energy is only escalating, as we all know, and we see in the Rybrook residents how people are very upset by their Con Edison bills, and it's really all the delivery fee.
Just themselves, right. They're gonna do this on their own.
When we're talking about green building code, this goes beyond energy.
Yeah.
I understand, but that is a very big part of it.
Material, this is stormwater, this is, you know, the energy as well, so there's a lot of aspects. And I think, you know, a lot of that was in the, the Keenan Bean memo, also the exhibits of what other municipalities have done. I think Hastings was the one that, you know, has had a code in place for years, where they created their own code, and then, you know, and people have to follow it. But again, that, to me, is undue burden on our building department, you know, where they have to enforce it, and look at that. That's why we had thought about it.
Still interested in keeping the discussion going.
So, get the committee together, let's get a committee together to research it, and come back with some recommendations, and then we'll.
Chris, what do you advise our next steps here?
Well, if the, if the board feels this is the right time to form a task force to look at this, and come back with recommendations, I think the mayor's right, it should be members of the village board, the planning board, and Sustainability Committee. I think that's the right group, so if you try to get, say, two representatives from each group, and have it chaired maybe by one of the board members, one of the trustees, or the mayor, whatever was on it, that would be a good way to work with staff as part of a task force to bring back recommendations. I think that would be a way to go. I think the board's given kind of direction on some of the concerns that are there, as well as some of the balancing of, uh, the costs versus the, versus the residential improvements. Um, so, between those three groups and the staff, the building department, probably the building department, Building Inspector Michael and I would be part of the groups, and obviously, Sarah Brown.
Right.
Still puts a lot of pressure on the building department.
And again, well, we don't know that. We don't know that. It could be, you know, it could be that we're requiring outside, you know, certification or something.
Some places do that, they hire a green, uh, somebody to review it separately.
Right, so in, you know, um, but again, this.
So, if the time is right.
It could be that, it could be that the task force comes back and says, you're wasting your time. You know, it could be.
Okay, so I think, why don't we, I think, um, if the liaisons to the Planning Board Sustainability would maybe reach out and ask for two representatives from each, maybe that would be good. Then the board can decide on two people, and then, obviously, we know the staff.
I know I'm not getting out of this one, so. I had an appointment myself.
So you just can't have, obviously, a majority, so.
Right.
Does that make sense? If you want to proceed at this time, that's kind of, we brought, I was talking to this with the mayor, and we said, you know, we didn't get closure, the board's a little bit different now, let's find out if this is still a goal at this time, or if you want to table it, you want to do something now, that's totally your options.
Yeah.
Well, I, I have a question for you, since you think the code is changing, and it will, um, have to filter down to us anyway.
Mm-hmm.
How soon do you see this happening, and exactly to what end is this happening? This is building, this is.
Yeah, I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna happen, but it does, the state does take a long time. I can tell you that much. They say they're gonna do it, and, uh, it will take a while. But, I mean, we should get a task force together, I think it's a good idea just to see it, and see what other municipalities, we have a list of stuff, uh, we were handed.
Got a lot of the homework done.
Yeah, a lot of the homework's done, so that our Sustainability Committee can, uh, look at it too, and let them come back with stuff, and we'll hash it out in the next few months. It's not like something has to be done tomorrow.
No.
Right.
Chris or Greg, if you guys could write up a picture or las.
A couple of bullet points of.
A couple of bullet points of.
With liaisons.
What the task force will be, I will then present it to Rob on the planning board.
Okay, so we'll give you, like, bullet points of the goals of what we're trying to accomplish.
Exactly, this way, Rob can also try to figure out who's best on his board.
Okay.
And Stephanie as the liaison to the.
We could do that.
To the Sustainability Committee.
Greg and I'll work on that.
What about airport, you want anyone from there?
They have, we are moving well with the airport task force, we have representatives.
Sure.
Huh? Oh, yeah. Yes, we, I have heard from both. Probably their next meetings are gonna have representatives from North Castle and Newcastle. We already have representatives from Rybrook, Portchester, City of Rye, Town of Rye. And Greenwich, so everything's all lined up, and, uh, the county airport does not give us the sign that they're currently moving forward on a very aggressive path, because I think they have other litigation issues they're working out at the airport, but, uh, I think it's a good time for them to get up to speed, get on kind of the same page, and start to meet. I think they're planning on meeting, they'd like to meet in mid-March. Have the first meeting, probably Zoom, mid-March. First meeting.
First meeting.
They have some people that would have a conflict, they said, otherwise.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so I think we have our, we then have our decision on the discussion item.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're good.
You'll send me some bullets, too.
Yeah, we will.
Um.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
All right, anything else, Chris?
Nope.
All right.
All right, so the next meetings of the Board of Trustees will be March twelfth and March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope you're not here the twenty-sixth.
Chris, go get your daughter.